Yes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming to attend this special session. This session is held by National Zhongzheng University from Taiwan. My name is Liu, and so I'm going to present my present my my powerpoints as the beginning, and then we have three other colleagues will present their own. So please be seated. So I think today our topic is a little bit different from the former sessions. Most of our sessions, we are trying to provide monitoring and reporting techniques to focusing on IU catch, for example, and so focusing on fishing capture. But for our project, we are focusing on human being. So I think all good deeds, bad deeds, only human beings can do it. So as a labor sociologist, my focusing is on how people doing bad conduct or good conduct. So today, the topic of our research is about how to utilizing technology to establish a human-centered ecosystem for labor rights protection and sustainable development in Taiwan's distant water fisheries. First of all, I would like to introduce my colleagues. So maybe this morning you have also listened to his presentation. So Professor Yo Bao Da. And Professor Xiong Boan, but he he is absent. And so his student Mo Mo Yo. And Dr. Tai. Thank you. So this is for our sub project on blockchain. Another another project is held by Dr. Ding. And together with Professor Liu. So and our assistant Esther. So this is our research theme. Okay, let me introduce you a little bit background of Taiwan in distant water fisheries. Okay, so before I start this, the explanation of this picture. First, I I attended the SAFEIT conference in Bangkok in 2019. And that was the first time I know about the organization of SAFEIT. I really got inspired by SAFEIT conference, which I I learned a lot. And and then that inspire me to apply for this current research. And at that time, there's a Taiwanese colleague who showed this picture. And someone sitting my backside, and I just I just heard a sigh. My Jesus Christ! So I don't know how many people are surprised about Taiwanese vessels. They're traveling all all oceans around, you know, see? So at that time, suddenly, I don't know, how should I be proud? Or should I be feel shameful? You know, it's a very ambiguous feeling for a sociologist who receive a lot of complaint about human rights protection, etc. So as a labor sociologist, so we are concerning about humans being human beings and and their conduct. So as you see this picture, this was the situation in 2018. And the Bangkok session was 2019, right? And then come up with COVID for three years. So you can imagine now the distant water fishery in Taiwan now is vastly increasing decreasing, and they are encountering a crisis at the moment. So this is no more the, you know, this exists only in history. So it is no more the reality. And let me inform you about the migrant fishers in Taiwan. For the moment, I think that it's hard to find any Taiwanese worker or fisher that really work in distant water fishery, except the captain and the high staff. So we have eight thousand, around eight thousand three hundred sixty-four migrant fishers from Indonesia, the Philippines, five thousand eight hundred and three, and Vietnam, three hundred eighty-one. So these are migrant fishers for distant water fisheries. And for offshore and coastal, it's about seven thousand in a total. Okay, so we have really a very so Indonesia play a very important part as our partner in distant water fisheries. After the COVID, I think now distant water fisheries in Taiwan is facing a very serious challenge. And also, I would like to report you about the policies as responses. In our project, we adopt, we conduct a kind of participatory observation methodology and trying to invite all stakeholders to help us to identify the problems. I think we should know the root cause, and then we can try to find solution and co-work with all stakeholders. So we have a very, let's say, very active collaboration with from industry part. So from the tuna association and squid and salary associations. And we also have a good talk with persona association in Taiwan. Together, we still have a so-called small-scale long-line association. So together, at that moment, Taiwan is around one thousand one hundred vessel. But now only less than eighty percent are still active because of the post-COVID situation. So there are something that for the long-line vessel owners that they cannot change. First is about the oil price. So they cannot change. They cannot, they can do nothing about oil price. But oil price occupies about forty percent of the cost for the for the for a vessel. And another thing is about the exchange rate. So for a vessel owner who just can export the capture to Japan or to the USA or to European Union, then you rely on the operation of exchange rate, but you cannot change. The third operating cost and still increasing is about the impact of enforcing fisheries and human rights. Taiwan is not recognized as a member state in the International Labor Organization, so the ILO. But the ILO Convention 188, 188, is the fundamental, the let's say, the principal convention to regulate human rights for distant water fisheries. And the Taiwan government decide to domesticate ILO C188. So now we are in a process to evaluating and to discuss with different government institutions and trying to comply with C188. So with the compliance of C188, of course, you can imagine the managing cost, especially for the labor cost, will be increasing. So here you you see the ILO C188 Working Fishing Convention. For our research, we also attended several meetings together to discuss with NGOs, with this industry, and to discuss how is the impact to the fishing industry? And how does vessel owners has to comply? And we provide discussion and consultancy to the vessel owners. Besides, since 2022, so last year, from the beginning of July, the Taiwan government decides to put to launch a so-called Nationwide Fishery and Human Rights National Action Program. And that will include seven items. All the items you have to evaluate with the eleven indicators on forced labor provided by the ILO. So we also study the the impact of the seven, the eleven forced labor indicators. And then, as a researcher, we insist to provide the so-called evidence-based research project and the result. We're trying to provide all the evidence, which it is impartial. And then, from the rights protection for workers. And we also, as we, as I already mentioned, we really, I mean, discuss with the industry, not only for the destination country like Taiwan. We also work with the countries of a region, I mean, from the labor protection. So Indonesian Trade Union is our prior target. And we start to work with SPPI. So that is the National Fishers Trade Union at the national level. So we have a very strong collaboration with them. And last week, we just kick off the first group of one hundred Indonesian fishers trained by SPPI after four weeks of training, plus another week sailing at sea and trying to see whether they are fit for this kind of overseas life. And then we provide a short Mandarin training. So some hundred keywords, communication keywords in Mandarin, and trying to to teach the Indonesian fishers. And I, we think that it's really very important to implement their good communication and good listening with captain and also the high staff. So after all, we think that's still not enough. Because if we are thinking to implement labor rights protection for migrant fishers, then we have to analyze what is the root cause that make them vulnerable when they are on board. The reason of vulnerability started from the recruitment system. So if the recruitment system is not transparent, if we don't include them as stakeholders, then the fishers, they before they're, before they depart, they already get in debt. They buying job, they paying something not transparent, and that became, that make them vulnerable. So later, we will have our first project, which is trying to create an ecosystem, a human-centered ecosystem. And our colleague will explain how we coordinate with the industry, with the owners' organization and workers' organization and trying to collaborate. But also, we focus on policy campaign. So we provide suggestion to our government, to the fishery authority. And we're trying to provide solutions. So we are not only identify problems, but also we provide solution. So the first project is going to focusing on this kind of how to build up human-centered system and trying to make the recruitment system transparent. So here you can see, this is an overall of our project. We start, I I cannot show you, but you here you see the from the zero one. So zero one, that is to identify stakeholders' needs and formulation of solutions. The second part is trying to establish a transparent and accountable cross-national recruitment system. As I said, that is the most important part. And we need, fishers need to be trained, well-trained, and well-informed what kind of vessel they are going to get on board and what kind of working environment. We are afraid that if they receive different information, especially from the from the recruiters, they might be conceived as they are going to, for example, to the commercial vessels or to some, you know, some big vessels, and but actually, it's not the the reality. So how to provide accurate information to make fishers understand what kind of vessel they are going to be and to have their good and exact mindset? That's very important, because they are going to stay at sea for several months, right? So that needs strong mind mindset. Okay, so the second step. The third step is trying to adopting evidence-based labor affairs management through smart technology. So here we have two system. One system is to provide blockchain technology, as Professor Yo explained this morning. We are trying to build up this kind of, let's say, blockchain and trying to cooperate with the origin country. So all the the true documents from the fisher's site will be will be uploaded to this blockchain. So to make sure there's no false health exam, there's no false CBS, there's no false certificate, something like that. And for the owner's side, they have to provide the exact information about the vessel and the the payment slip. So to to make sure that for the fishers, they can receive the exact sum of money. So here is the third part. And for the fourth part, we would like to prevent the violence and ensuring non-abusive working conditions. So CCTV, that is part of this project. We provide evidence base, that's because most time, most of time, the workers complain that they sleep less, less than the obligatory rest hour of ten hours. So according to C188, so for a fisherman, he should receive at least ten hour of rest time. But according to the European Union indicated, they can separate a two-part. So the main part is at least six hours, another four hours. So for Taiwan vessels, they adopt this kind of flexible, at least six hours plus another four hours. But if during the harsh time, if the fishers, they cannot really have a good rest, then they have to compensate either by time or by money. So that is the rule. And as I said, it's been regulated in the nation, human rights, fish, human rights and fishery program. So together with these four parts that compose our overall project. And so now may I invite Dr. Ting to present our sub-project one. So that is about fair recruitment and decent work, engaging all stakeholders to enhance the cross-national recruitment system.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for Professor Liu Huang's introduction. Okay, so even our projects still work in progress. So but I would like to share you so far what is what we have done so far. Okay, so I mainly focus on the project, sub-project one. And the sub-project one mainly focus on the entire ecosystem of the migrant fishers to ensuring a smooth transitions from their recruitment to safe return. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I'm going to talk about, sorry. Okay. The the topics is about navigating the waters of fair employment, safety fairness, and collaboration. As Professor Liu Huang already mentioned about some of the big challenges in Taiwan's distant water fisheries and also the policy responses. And for here, I would like to share some of the controversial issues has a resonance in Taiwan, Taiwan's deep-water fisheries. Those migrant fishery, they during their recruitment procedures, at different stage, there are so many dispute issues coming out. So only when we understand what's the root cause, then we can try to think about the what's the solutions. And so for the recruitment and the training stage, sometimes the the migrant fisher raise some of the issue, especially for like inconsistent version of their labor contract or their depth and longs, or even the information asymmetries, for especially lack of the transparency. Or the, just Professor Liu mentioned about the first fight documentation, or some of the issue coming out is on one rated wage deductions, or even the poor training quality. Because some of the migrant fishery, they may not get proper training. They want to get on boards very quickly. So sometimes within like seven few days, they can get on board. So they might, they may not really understand what kinds of vessels they are going to work with, and also the working condition on the vessel. So that's also, so create some problem. And at the stage of employment and placement, sometimes the vessel owner complains because some of the migrant fishers, they may not really want to work on on board. So they just take this channel to come into Taiwan, and but when they arrive, they run away. So it's create some cost for the vessel owner. But however, it's still create some risk for the migrant fisher as well, because there's without the legal protections, they they may have a very difficult times to 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 live in Taiwan. Although they may find other jobs and get the more income, but still create some risk for themselves. And also, some of the migrant fishers also comes, mention about the the work, working condition is not matched with their contract. So it's also another issue. And some of the migrant fishers, they may not suitable to work at sea. And so sometimes also, some of the issue create when they work at sea. And so very common issue is about the passport. Some people argue that the the captains keep the passport is for a safe keeper or it's just to avoid they run away. It's so different positions, they have a different idea about this. And also about the disputes over working hour. So it's also create how to identify the working hour and also the rest times. For example, like unsure standby is working hour or is is rare rest time, navigation time as well. Sometimes the vessel owner argue that the the navigation times one month, but they didn't work with their pay them. So how to calculate this kinds of working hour is also another issue. Have to find the consensus about this. Or some of the migrant fishers consider about, they may argue that they were outside of their permission. And also, some of the issue with the food accommodation. But maybe some of those vessel owners saying like, okay, we do provide enough food for them, but the migrant fishers compare, complain because this, the food is not really fresh and also the water is not clean, something like this. Or some of the issue about the language barrier, because on one vessels, maybe difference, those migrant fishers from different country. So it's also very difficult them to communicate with each other, because captain may be Taiwanese, but the the other high rank, the super, super periods, they may not from different countries. And also migrant fishers may be from Indonesia, it's very difficult for them to understand and also sometimes create some of misunderstood. And also, the improper disciplines, maybe create some of the verbal and physical abuses. And also, long stays on the ship is usually, especially for the deep-water fishers, because sometimes they they enter the port maybe after few months. So those migrant fishers, they are on on the ships, is create also the sense of isolation. So recently, some of the NGO or human right, and they tried to campaign about the installation of the Wi-Fi. Yeah, but some of the vessel owner also consider about this. They accept, but they 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 suggest step-by-step, they don't want to installation of the Wi-Fi to create some problem for the migrant fishers. And for the return stage, is also some of the issue, for example, like early termination of the contract, who is going to pay this cost? Yeah, so this is also another argument. But the governments from Taiwan, they already set up a regulation. So if the vessel, migrant fishers, they work complete one years, actually, the vessel owner have to pay for the early termination of the contract. And and another issue is about the complaint cases. This sometimes create some issues, because when the migrant fishers in Taiwan, during their contract times, they didn't really complain about their working condition. But after they finish their contract, return to their home country, and then the fishing fishing agencies accept the complaint cases, but that's already like a few years later. So it's create some issues, how to clarify realities in that years is very difficult. Yeah, so this kinds of issues, how to sort it out those problem? Besides that, some of the NGOs, or they also argue that there there are two-tiered management systems in Taiwan. But we have, I have to clarify here, because sometimes people confuse and mix up this true situation. Because we have two system, one is coastal and offshore migrant fishers. Because we have two system, one is coastal and offshore migrant fisheries, mainly they through the domestic employment this channel. And for the deep-water migrant fisheries, they use the overseas employment this channel. So the responsible authority are different because the deep-water migrant fisheries, they they may, when they start recruit, working on the Taiwanese vessel, after they finish their contract, they may not enter Taiwan territory. So sometimes that's why this two different system because they may not enjoy the health cares assist insurance in Taiwan because they never entered Taiwan's territory. Even they enter the port, the the policy still oversee, so that's the issue. And so even the insurance are different. Sorry. And wages are different. Sometimes NGOs consider about wages difference because they think that's create discrimination. But however, when we look at deeply, because coastal and offshore migrant fisheries, they actually, they they even almost equal to the Taiwanese citizen, they can protect by the law, so they can get like a basic wages, US dollar, eight hundred dollar per month is similar, is the same as the Taiwanese citizen. But for this distant water migrant fisheries, they they the rules different. But their salary has been increased in 2017 from to four hundred fifty, and then last year, July, already increased again up to four five hundred fifty. So now is for coastal and offshore migrant fishery, their salary is about eight hundred US dollar per month, but for distant water migrant fisheries is five hundred fifty per month. It's look like two hundred, two hundred fifty different. But when we look different, look deeply, actually, it's may be just fifty to one hundred USD dollar different because for the my coastal and offshore migrant fishery, they have to pay the service fee, yeah, to to the recruitment agencies. Yeah, first year is US dollar sixty dollar per month, and then second year is fifty five dollars per month, and the third year is fifty dollar. But for the distant water migrant fisheries, it's employees responsibilities and also their food and lodging fees also employees responsibility. So this is true, actually, it's like the the gap is 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 not what we think such big. So we we after we collect the data, we find all those issues happen in the Taiwan distant water fisheries. Try to, as Professor Liu said, we try to work out those stakeholder have to have a conversation and also work together to sort out those issue. We we use the competitors, participatory action research, and we conduct the research in Taiwan and in Indonesia. Apart from the literature analysis, we also doing the participatory observation, especially for participant in the five labor protection of fishing vessel. And also, we talked to different core course stakeholder, including ship owners, captains, or fishery association. Even in the migrant fisheries country of origin, we also visit some of the governmental associations, also the recruitment agencies as well. So we conducts fifteen focus groups. So you can see, sorry. Here, actually, for immigration study, for the recruitment procedure, it's always like a black, black box, but we try to make it transparency. So our research team facilitate migrant fisheries trade unions from the country of original, work with the vessel owners, like Taiwan tuna association and the Taiwan squid and sorry fishery association. They work together and they signed the correct CBA. What does that this means? They signed the CBA, this is the binding agreement. So to ensures they provide the transparent recruitment procedures and also the working condition. And so this, they also create this platform to provide the training from the migrant fisheries trade union and from and also from the the vessel owner decide, they also provide what they need. And this this platforms also play a role in consultation and also dealing with some of the complaint, complaint, complaint cases. So how how does this work? Because after they sign the CBA and then they form the work group. So these these working groups are bring together representative from all three parties with several key objectives. Three party including our research team. Our research team plays the role is in consultation and coordination. So this work, working groups try to orchestrate the operation of the CBA with the ultimate aim to establish the fair employment and the safe return management system and also work together to devise the some of the measures to ensure the achievement of the sustainable fisheries and safeguard the labor right. And also to oversee and regulate their response respective members while also engaged in negotiation to sort out any related issues and dispute disputes. And this is the, we use the blockchain this technology to to help maintain the labor right and also because it's not to use the blockchain, blockchain technology is not just only for the transparent, it's also to hold every party to accountable. So now this, this blockchain still is working in progress. So maybe in the end of this years, that they were a were complete. So initially, we we will start from those, our research team and also the some of the representative of the stakeholders to do the test testing. And after testings, we will open this for use by the other stakeholders, including those migrant fisheries and or captain or recruitment agency and even the governmental departments as well. As Professor Liu Huang mentioned about, because this kinds of digital address, they the migrant fishery can upload their their passport or their their contracts. So it cannot be revised, so it's make everything transparent. So this kinds of technology, maybe later, Professor Yo, he will present, so I'm not going to talk too much about this. So anyway, this research is trying to use this technology. But this technology is based upon upon the human central framework. So it's the operation mode emphasize the cooperation among the stakeholders. Through this kinds of bilateral operations and dialogue with the different interest parties, our goal is to try to establish a fair and safe transnational employment ecosystem for the distant water fisheries. So the others, three question I raised, but this may, we may not answer right now because we haven't yet complete the app. So after the app complete and then start the use this kind, the app for the pilot testings, we will try to improve and then we will see how this technology enhance the communication and the cooperation among the policymakers, tech developer, and also the migrant fisheries. Okay, that's all my presentation. I will hand over to Professor Liu Huang. Thank you.
So now I would like to invite Professor Yo to explain more about how we utilize blockchain to solve the problem.
Okay. I try to emphasize again most of the content I present in this morning. And because in this morning, I already emphasized about the transparency. Actually, we can find at least, I think, four or five groups, like the migrant fisheries and their family and also employment agent and also some company, also the government, also a couple international organization want to watch all the data, you know, through a lot of, I just mentioned that the groups. So all the data need to be transparency to hold a group I just mentioned. So in this case, I think the blockchain is the best way to realize this this goal. Okay, so I just emphasize about the this morning I just mentioned. Actually, we can, you can see here, the basis of the blockchain is a transparency, I think this first one, very important key technique. And the second is immutability, and the third one is the enhanced security and data we just mentioned. And then, because the blockchain require a lot of constraint, not means it is just like a crowd solution. Most of people understand, we sometime we have a crowd storage and we can store our data into a crowd storage, but blockchain is not that, not really one hundred, one hundred percent about that. So in this case, it maybe is not a penalty can save everything. I think it is not that. And later on, because most of the people up to now not quite understand about the blockchain. So in this case, some untrusted blockchain operation no risk or will be, I think, maybe happen or something like that. In this case, how to correct back and that this good solution can solve the a couple problem I just mentioned. And later on, we are try to promote a lot of strategy to encourage those migrate migrant features, they can use this system to take more advantage about that. Okay, I try to speed up. And here, because this research, we just give a good management system to, I just mentioned a lot of groups. So in this kind of case, we need to some administrative transparency. I just mentioned maybe just realize the sub-project one, mention a lot of idea we are try to realize. So in this, the first one, we need to do some administrative transparency. And later on, some document data issue can be read by whole the group, I just mentioned, family and employee, employer and the government engine and some international organization, something like that. And finally, all the data must be reliable. Okay, so here, I just in this morning, I already mentioned about that that first one is decentralized and second ones are anonymous and incorrupted, nobody can change the data after you submit the data into the blockchain. And also, you can check the data on the blockchain because the data is already there, nobody can remove it away. And also, in case something happen, so we need to increase, increase something that, I mean, like this morning, I say the private key and the public key to let a more more safe, the transparency, because the time I'm not going to, then how to implement this to be transparency, I think is a little difficult to mention here. If you would like to listen, maybe next time I try to use two hours to teach you some technique. But this one, I think, is important of why we use the blockchain here. And then this one, immutability, because the document data, the document folder, like put in the crowd, in the crowd. So in this case, it means the data put in the crowd means everybody can look it, I just mentioned the transparency, how to realize this technology, I think is very interesting. We need to use very, I mean, we need to apply the big data, also need to apply crystal graph and also need to apply a couple technique, just Dr. Ding mentioned about the digital signature like that. Okay. And this is, this is, we also put some effort on this system, enhance security, but the main, you can look at the graph, but either the four, I I try to speed up because we only have a limited power. And later on, it's this, it is not a completed powerful solution. So we need to follow something. For instance, if the migrate features, they working on the vessel, in this case, maybe the network does not connect it. I mean, does not connect, in this case, the only way we use the satellite, but the satellite sometime is a very cost much. So in this case, we need to, how to make the centralized reliable and some conceptual mechanism? So this is still a problem, we need to solve it. Later on, I just mentioned some approach. So you can hear still some some trusted problem, like a data on the, you know, on the sea. So in this case, how to let the data consistent, but sometime data is not consistent, up to they pick a big to the land and then the consistent, but maybe duration a couple, maybe one week, one month. So how to let the data consistent, I think, is still a problem. And also, data and and data loss or something like that. So in this case, we try to, we so-called internet or intranet on the vessel is is form an intranet. How to simulate the intranet like a blockchain? I think this still a good research issue. So we try to put the node inspection, transparency, consensus mechanism on intranet, not instead of internet. But later on, internet and intranet will synchronize. So this is a challenge. I just, I mentioned this about the challenge problem. Okay, and okay, I think this is still big issue. So I think most of the solution we already got, because I just say, put the intranet, intranet, simulate the intranet to be an internet, I think probably we can solve the the problem. And also invite more fisher, I mean, migrant fisher include the captain. And also invite more of feature, I mean, the migrant feature include the captain, use the intranet solution. You see here, they can use the intranet to communicate and they can chat. And I think that's, that's best way, invite more features join into the system. They will look like a real blockchain. Okay, so this, I think, in my sub project, we just try to realize project one. Mention about that kind of mission, try to improve the warfare of the, about the migrate features. I think we, we are going to try our best to use engineering people to do some social mission. I think we hope we can do this kind of research success. Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the limit of time. So could you, could please, could you please come back to the first slide? And the six point one, oh yeah. I suppose we don't have time for QA, right? But we are ready, I, I mean, we, we would like to stay here for a question, so.
I certainly would like to ask a question. I'm Bubble Cook with WWF and this is really exciting work. It's, it's really encouraging to see you using the blockchain platform to, particularly for the purpose of ensuring that their documents are maintained. And so my question is related to that. Are you considering self sovereign identity mechanisms beyond just uploading their passport image and that kind of thing, so that they have control over their, their documentation? Because I think that's a really important feature. And the second part of that is in the Western and Central Pacific, at the moment, we've got a crew welfare initiative that's moving forward, that'll become a measure. And the big challenge is with the crewing agencies. And so I know that you noted in one bullet that it's the, there's a responsibility to the crewing agency to provide part of that blockchain node. How do you go about the cross jurisdictional requirement to ensure that the crewing agency in Indonesia is bound by the blockchain requirements of Taiwan? And vice versa?
Yeah. So as we explained, we had already invited owner side and worker side to sign a CBA, the collective agreement, right? So that is with binding force. Now, we are asking the recruitment agency also to sign the CBA. So that's, so if you want to serve for the Indonesian workers as a recruitment agency, then you have to sign the CBA. And if you are Taiwanese agency, then if you want to serve for the Taiwanese vessel owners, still, you have to sign the CBA. So the, I, I think two parties are not enough, so four parties. So that is our original idea. Is that?
No, that, that answers the question. No, and that's really encouraging that it's, it's considered at a business level rather than at a governmental level. So that's really encouraging. The question?
Yeah, hi, good afternoon. I'm Cherry from Kowili AI. So basically, I'm based in the Philippines, so I, I saw that you have data from the Philippines. But for me is like, this is on the research level right now. But who will be be burdened by the cost when you put it on the market or with the users? Or maybe I, I, I will just kinda focus on the question, who will be paying for the cost?
For the recruitment cost? For the
No, for the overall
You mean the, the technology part?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we, we have discussed among our colleagues and we are, we are thinking, because this is a three year based research project sponsored by the National Scientific Science Council. And the, the, the project will be ended next year by, by July, by the, by the month of July. And we are thinking, would be possible for first to extend another years to, you know, to make it more comprehend, complete. And also, and trying to, to cooperate with some companies and whether that can be become kind of social enterprise. So we can apply this kind of technology and keep serving for the fishers and of course, I think even for vessel owners, they, they still have to pay something. I mean, if we want to make it as a, you know, sustainable mechanism. Yeah.
A bit of a follow up question, I think, and, and my ignorance on exactly how the government operates within Taiwan. The Science Council is that, the work you're doing, is it endorsed by the government? I, I noticed the handout is building a framework for the policy. I guess the question is, does the government itself support the work that you're doing and is funding your work such that it will actually be implemented as policy at a government level and therefore become regulated?
Actually, we, we work closely with the fishery agency. I mean, they, for example, to equip CCTV in the beginning is a kind of encouraging policy. But in three years, that will become obligatory. So that is one thing. And by using blockchain, we have already discussed with the head of the fishery agency. And it would be very possible that we can, for example, to transfer to, to the government and then they can still utilize this technology.
Okay, so right now, it's kind of proof of concept research that you're doing.
The?
It's kind of like proof of concept?
Yes, exactly.
Right, so once you prove
It's just like a pilot research now, and we prove the, the efficiency and, you know, that's true, that we can improve and enhance labor protection for migrant fishers. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, maybe I just, a few seconds to complete my observation. So I, I mean, I've been conducting in this field for, for, for seven years. And some people in Taiwan now, even some politicians, they, they argue, is this water feature a sustainable human activity? Reasons of being, because our former Minister of Agriculture even doubt if this water feature is so troublemaker, you know, so troublesome, why not we just close it? And the reason of thinking like that, that's because fishery and like agriculture, these are marginalized industry, according to my observation. So especially for this water features, they, they have less voice than the land based industry. So for example, everybody is known about TSMC, the chip industry in Taiwan. Actually, they are government supported, so they have the full support resource from the government. But if you're asking this water features, they, they will argue, we didn't, we didn't use any land of Taiwan, right? We didn't use any electricity, we pay electricity, we pay everything. But how come we, we don't have, we, we are like a seven gray citizen? So that is the complaint from the industry side. And so I think if we want to really improve the betterment of this water fishery first, I think self recognition and self dignity for this water fisher is really very important. Because we are thinking, even the scale is being decreasing, I mean, in Taiwan. But still, it exists not only in economic part, but still, social value, cultural value, religious value. These are value that shape the this water features. So we're thinking we should try to foster self dignity for this water fishers. And then with this kind of glory, then they would, they will respect and take care of every, I mean, of every fisherman. That's another part, a continuing part that we will keep collaborating with this water fisheries. So that is one thing I would like to answer. And second is who benefit most from the global tuna supply chain? I don't think that would be the producers. So we are talking about the producer, the vessel owners and the, the captain, etc. But actually, that is the highest part, the big buyers, the multinational supermarkets like Walmart, these foundations. They, but they don't provide really substantial encourage for vessel owners to, you know, to, to, to survive or to sustain if there's any implementation. So we should renegotiate, who should share the part of implementation of all the cost? And we also, as Taiwanese, we also, you know, we are, we are receiving the pressure from the big countries like United States and European Union. So there's no free trade, but only fair trade. But I think we will keep Taiwan on the right track. Thank you.